Here we go. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, as I call to order, to August 2025 Meeting of the Escamia County School Board. Whether you're joining us via live stream or in the audience, we appreciate your interest in the education of students of Escamia County. The mission of Escamia County Public Schools is to provide an equal access to quality of public education that embraces the uniqueness and potential of each student. We are united in our mission. At this time, I ask that you will silence your cell phones and electronic devices. As a reminder, there are two public forum options. There will be a public forum for agenda items only, including the consent agenda and student employee discipline at the beginning of the meeting, and then a public forum at the end of the meeting for any items pertaining to school district business or public education. Additionally, if you are speaking to either, speaking to any of the items for public hearing, you will be called to speak during the agenda public forum. If you wish to speak at either of the forums, you must complete a form located on the back table of the room and bring it forth to Ms. Harris at the front table. If you wish to speak at both forums, you must fill out a form for both. All speakers must be, all forms must be submitted prior to the start of the agenda public forum. This meeting was properly advertised in the Pensacola News Journal, legal notice number It is the tradition of the Escamia County School Board to begin each meeting with the invocation or motivational moment, followed by the pledge of allegiance. This month, Ms. Fesco, District 2, will lead us.
If you'll bear me some due diligence at the moment, a bunch of years ago, there were people from Escambia County who had gone to a training on curriculum mapping. Some of the more experienced, seasoned, older people who were in the room had that training. A lady named Heidi Hayes Jacobs, she did the training on the curriculum mapping, and she always began every one of her presentations with a chair on the stage. I want to call everyone's attention to the chair. And Heidi implored people, she says, "Think of a child you know, or a classroom of children, or a school of children, or a community of children. Keep them in that chair during all the work and all the business that we conduct this evening, so that we remember that what we do is about children first, and everything we do affects those children. We, as leaders in the community and in the school district, need to be mindful that the children do come first, and we need to make decisions that's going to be in their best interest always and ever." Now, if you'll please stand with me and let me offer a short prayer. Heavenly Father, as we meet today and every time we meet, let us always give thanks to you for the many blessings, for your protection, for your guidance, for your wisdom, and may we always remember the child that needs us to be their protector. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Fesco. At this time, we will move to the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or deletions to your recommended agenda?
Yes, sir. Under Section 21 Consent Finance Accounting Operation, Item B has been added. Under Section 24 Consent Finance Procurement, we've deleted Item P, and we've added Item U and Item V. Under Section 31 Consent Operations Facilities Planning Miscellaneous, Item B has been deleted.
Thank you. State statute and school board rules require that changes made to the agenda after publication be based on the findings of good cause determined by the person designated to preside over the meeting and stated in the records. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion, please vote. Good, what's your thing?
I did.
Proved five to zero.
Need a correction?
We'll make a note that Mr. Harold seconded that motion, and we'll get it corrected for the minutes.
Thank you. Moving into committee, departmental reports and special recognition, Mr. Superintendent, we'll start with PTA update.
Come on up, young lady.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board members. Thank you for giving me this time to report on PTA in Escambia County. For the audience, I am Melanie Gamble, the current president of the Escambia County Council of PTA. August, as you know, has been a very busy month, not only for y'all, but the 30 PTAs, as they assisted in greeting the teachers and students back in all our schools. Our parent volunteers are already making a difference in the daily routine of our schools by lending a hand where needed. As you may know, PTA's membership count starts over each school year. We ended last year with 3,086 parent, grandparent, community, and neighbor members. As of today, we already have 1,472 of these parents, teachers, students, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and your neighbors who have joined to support the PTA mission throughout our county. I hope you've had a chance to join at least one PTA, and remember, you can join more than one. As a membership association, our strength comes from our members' voice. Let me know if you need information on how to join. County Council's purpose is to train, support, and assist all of our local units in our schools. One of our main events is the annual Fall Leadership Training, which is set for September 6th at Marcus Point Baptist Church from 8:00 to 2:00. You each received an email invitation to our event, and we hope you are able to spend the day with us. But if not, please try to stop by at some point and meet our special guests from Florida PTA, check out the exhibit hall with resources from local businesses and nonprofits, and most importantly, meet with some of the wonderful parents who have volunteered their time and talent to run their PTA. There's free coffee and breakfast at 8:00, and free lunch, and some little bit of fun in the exhibit hall starting at 11:30. We hope to see each one of you on September 6th. Another important date to put on your calendar is March 5th for our 2026 National PTA Reflections Arts Awards Ceremony to be held at Washington High School's auditorium. We are looking forward to celebrating our creative students in the areas of visual arts, literature, dance composition, film production, and photography. And as a little bit of a teaser, mark your calendars for the afternoon of February 16th for a special family event in honor of National PTA's Founder's Day. ECC PTA and our local units are looking forward to assisting our schools throughout the year to ensure an engaging, productive school year for all of our students in Escambia County. Thank you again for allowing me time to speak on PTA in Escambia County.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Gamble, I want to thank you for all the things that the PTA does for all over the district and all the schools. When I was a principal, we had 100% membership for 10 straight years, and I can tell you, that's one of the things when you get parents engaged in a building, not only that, it increases your volunteers, there's just so many pluses to that. Thank you for all that you do for boys and girls.
Thank you. It's all the parents that are out there in the trenches at the schools that are helping. And on that note, if I may, MacArthur is reinstating their PTA on September 4th, and I'll send you a notice of that. Mr. Harold, I think that's your district?
I've already met the principal, and she's filled me in on that.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
We've got quite a number of celebrations tonight, so just bear with us, bring your patience. If Ms. Graham and Ms. Waters would come to the podium? Tonight, we're fortunate to recognize some students that have won scholarships, and Ms. Graham and Ms. Waters are going to help us celebrate. Thank you for being here this evening.
Yes, good evening, good evening. I'm Elizabeth Graham, the Construction Career Day's co-chair. It is a pleasure to be here today to distribute some more scholarships to Escamia County students. For those of you who are not aware, Construction Career Days is a nationwide event that we hold annually, Northwest Florida holds, at the Santa Rosa County Fairgrounds. It has been a great opportunity to bring students in, to get an experience, hands-on experience of what the industry has to offer. We are continuously growing in our industry, and there is a huge need for the workforce to come into the industry. With this, it also gives a greater opportunity to hand out scholarships. We did raise enough money to hand out another $50,000 this year. Thirty-seven scholarships are going to be awarded this year, with 10 of those being awarded to Escambia County students. With that, I'll go ahead and start calling them out. If y'all would like to come down and take a photo with each one, shake their hand, or we can take a group photo after.
Are you Ms. Graham or Ms. Waters?
I'm Ms. Graham.
So what we'll do, we'll let you announce each of them?
Okay.
And then the school board members are going to come around right now?
Okay.
And we'll be out front, and all of you, eventually, once we get everybody on the podium, we'll get a good group picture, okay?
That sounds great.
All right.
All right, well, I'll start out with our $2,000 scholarships with Jake Boutwell from Northview High. Tyler Gilmore from Northview High. Heath Washington from West Florida. Congratulations. And our $500 scholarships, Alec Clark from Tate High. Markavia Johnson from Northview. Miller Richards from Tate High. Jaquan Richardson from Northview. And Randy Williams from Tate High. We also had Rondalasia Greer and Jackson Simmons, but they are not able to be here today. And for the ones who have not been able to attend, or have been, please join us again at the Spring 2026 event. Thank y'all.
Next, we have the opportunity to recognize the Northview Lady Chiefs that are here with us tonight, Coach Holland, Mr. Sherrill, all of the ladies. Let me tell you a little bit about what they were, come on up, you can move while I talk. I'm an old coach as well. The Northview Lady Chiefs were able to go to the state final four for the first time ever in the history of the school. They also, this one here, I really like, they beat Jay High School twice, am I correct? Three times, that's even better, way to go. If you two ladies and the coaches would introduce themselves, we're going to get you to come up and greet each one of the board members, we have a certificate for you, and then we'll get Coach Holland to take it back to the other players. All but one of the players from last year's team will be coming back this year, and a lot of them are involved in other activities tonight, including a volleyball game, if I'm correct, but we're very proud of each of you, okay? If you'll tell us your name and then come on up.
So I'm Coach Amy Holland, I'm the head softball coach at Northview High School, and like you said, this is not our whole team, but the rest of our team is playing in a volleyball game, and so we're just glad to be here today. We thank you for supporting us. I know I received several emails from different ones who congratulated us, and it was a great season, and we're hoping next year we can bring that trophy back to Escambia County. So we really appreciate everything that you've done for us. This here is Coach Sean Tyndall, he is a new coach that we brought on this past year. He has helped us tremendously. Our other head coach, his daughter's playing tonight, so he is not here, that's John McAnally. But this is Coach Sean, and he has helped us tremendously, and so I'm very proud of him. And this is Bailey Burkett, she is our catcher, and she was a 10th grader this past year, and she did a phenomenal job. This is our first baseman, she actually had our highest batting average this year. Her name is Avery Stuckey, she played first base for us, she did pitching some for us also, so we're excited. We only had like 10 varsity players, how we made it through a state championship with 10 players as a coach, you know that's kind of hard to do, but we just, we feel like we have protection with us, so thank you for your support, and we hope to bring the trophy back next year.
Our next presentation this evening is what's known as the Superintendent's Choose Wellness Challenge. Perhaps I should choose it, but these are schools that have done a remarkable job in getting all the individuals that work at their site, and I'm going to announce some of these winners, I'm going to announce all of the winners. The first is that school that will receive 250 The first is that school that will receive $250. The highest percentage participation at the middle school level goes to another school from the north end, Ernest Ward Middle School. Tavanna, and your team, please come forward. Next award is for the highest participation at the high school level, Northview High School. Distance does not matter, does it, Mike? Next award is for the highest percentage participation at the major department level, and that is Spencer Vibes. Who's... Dr. Colo and Mr. Alabak. The next award is for the most improved, and the winner in that category is Success Academy. We'll make sure that we get their award to them. And then finally, the big winner of 2024-25 of the Superintendent's Wellness Challenge, Malino Park Elementary School. Ms. Johnacek, and your team.
All right, here we go.
Mr. Windham had written a long presentation that I should have made, so I apologize. I'll do that next year, okay? No, just please stay, board. We have two very significant proclamations, resolutions that we're going to be handing out tonight. The first one, if the individual that's going to accept this for the Raleigh Foundation, please come forward. Ms. Payne, do you have that to read? Ms. Payne will read it, and then we'll get you to come greet the board, okay?
I've got a little something.
You'll get to say everything you want to say, okay? Because this is certainly a worthwhile cause. When we think about that empty chair, it should tell all of our hearts what we need to do.
Whereas children of Escambia County school districts, whereas children are Escambia County school districts' most valuable resource, and their health is crucial to our county's economic development, continued success, and well-being as a whole. And whereas Northwest Florida reports an average of 50 local children are newly diagnosed with cancer each year. And whereas cancer is the number-one disease killer of children in the United States. Yet, childhood cancer, research is severely underfunded, where less than 10% of the National Institute of Health allocates cancer research funding to children. And whereas research in the field of childhood cancer will allow for better treatment options, safe, quality therapies, and ultimately, a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas Raleigh Foundation for Childhood Cancer Research has provided a valuable resource to children and families who are afflicted with this horrendous disease. Now therefore be it resolved that the Escambia County School District does hereby recognize the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and encourages others to participate in efforts throughout the year to raise awareness and funding for childhood cancer research with Raleigh Gulf Coast, while supporting families who face devastating effects and cost. Be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and that a copy be tendered to Raleigh Gulf Coast, adopted this 19th day of August 2025.
So my name is Haley Brown, and I'm our program and Raleigh Kid Manager for Raleigh Gulf Coast. I wanted to start off by saying thank you to the Escambia County School Board for recognizing this initiative of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. I have the honor of serving our Raleigh kids and their families every single day, as our office is located directly in the Studer Family Children's Hospital here in Pensacola, Florida. Each day, we work in their honor and in their memory, so one day, no parent has to hear the devastating words that their child has cancer. Forty-seven kids are diagnosed with cancer every single day in America. If you think about that, that's almost two full classrooms of children diagnosed with cancer every single day. Ninety-three cents of every single dollar Raleigh Foundation raises goes directly towards funding childhood cancer research and finding better treatment options with fewer long-term side effects and hopefully a cure. This recognition means the world to us and our families, and we are a village of support during the toughest battles of these families' lives. So thank you so much.
Next will be a proclamation for the PTA Membership Month. Ms. Gamble, please come forward.
Whereas the Escambia County Council of PTAs has a long tradition of seeking the highest possible educational advantages for all children in youth, so they can recognize and realize their full potential. And whereas the Escambia County Council of PTAs assists parents in developing the skills they need to nurture and protect their children, and encourages parent and public involvement in public schools in our community, and speaks on behalf of children and schools in the community in organizational meetings and before public governing bodies. Whereas during the month of September 2025, special activities will be held to promote parent involvement, expand the membership of the Escambia County Council of PTAs, and broaden the PTA's base of support, so it becomes a stronger, more effective voice for children in education. And whereas it is the role of the Escambia County Council of PTAs to encourage parent involvement by promoting an environment in which parents are valued as primary influences in their children's lives. And whereas for more than 128 years, PTA has been a powerful voice for children, a relevant resource for parents, and a strong champion for public education committed to making sure parent participation in education is meaningful. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Escambia County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of September 2025 as PTA Partnership or Membership Month. In the school district of Escambia County, Florida, and calls upon families, schools, businesses, and communities to be our partners in announcing this resolution and to become active and participating this month. Be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and a copy be tendered to Melanie Gamble, ECC PTA President, and Samantha Strickland, ECC PTA First Vice President, adopted this 19th day of August 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We do not have any agenda public forum, so we'll move into the adoption of the minutes. Item A, July 10th, regular workshop. Can I get a motion?
They're moved.
I'll second.
In discussion. Please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Item B, July 15th, regular meeting.
I'll move that as a minutes. I'll second.
They're moved and second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Item C, July 24th, special meeting.
They're moved.
Second.
They're moved and second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Item D, July 31st, special meeting.
They're moved. Second.
They're moved and second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have items for public hearing. Item A, Policy 7320.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Kristen.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
They're moved.
I'll second.
Are there any items to be pulled? Curriculum. Finance. Human resource. Operations. Superintendent, including student-employee discipline. Please vote on the consent agenda minus... Well, we didn't have any pool items. Please vote on the consent agenda.
Approved five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have items from the board. The first item is Item A. Out-of-district travel.
I'll move that we accept that.
I'll second.
They're moved and second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Item B, FY 25/26, out-of-state travel. Can I get a motion?
I move that we accept the, as written, the out-of-state travel.
I'll second.
They're moved and second. Any discussion? Please vote. Let's hold on to the next item. I'm sorry, let me get the results first.
Approved five to zero.
Okay. On Item C, do I relinquish to the vice chair to do this? Because I will make the motion at this point. You'll carry out, Mr. Harrell, if you wouldn't mind carrying out the vote.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Do I have a motion?
I move to amend the... I make a motion to amend the School Board Resolution 2025-1.
And I'll second.
Is there any discussion? This chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
You're right.
Yeah, I will be voting no on this motion. In a way, one of the biggest complaints I seen on the last time we had this referendum, it was on that ballot, which was what? Several pages, had all those other referendums. This will be the big topic on that primary. And if people want to vote, they'll come vote. If they don't want to vote, then they don't care about the issue. So I'm going to go ahead and support what we've already done and vote no.
I will be voting yes. The... What is the goal of this resolution? It is to get the wide variety of snapshot of the entire community. So we have more people voting in the general than we do in the primary, so I would like to see a bigger picture, bigger opportunity for our families to come out and serve those support.
Okay, you through, Ms. McGosh?
Yes.
Dr. Williams? All right. Mr. Fetzko, you have anything you want to say? Okay. I would... I waited to last as the chair. I would recommend that our members of the board who voted for this in the past continue this, that we not break the pattern that we've already established with this. Uh, this, there's been a lot of special interest lobbying on this. Uh, it, uh, it would not be before us tonight if that special interest had, uh, had gotten their way and it stayed in the other group. So, uh, I would just say this, uh, this, in my opinion, this is what's best for boys and girls. It's best for the community, uh, and it's, uh, I, I agree with what one of my colleagues just said, that there's a lot of, uh, uh, there's going to be a lot on the ballot, and if people are interested, they'll come out and vote. Before this, when this was held, all of the advantages were toward the group that sponsored the referendum. A, a bunch of money was thrown at this and it barely passed. Uh, now, uh, the wording is more favorable for it, and, uh, uh, I would recommend that we vote, uh, that they, uh, we continue the way that things are now. Okay, are we read?
Okay, I was, um, we need to revote. We would ask to...
Had to do the motion over again? Okay.
Ma'am? Okay.
Is already changed? So, with a, with a ver- his verbal is okay?
What I can do...
Is his verbal?
What I want to do to make sure we get it on the record.
Right.
I would like for you to
Okay.
restate the motion.
Okay.
Let's do a voice, a roll call for the votes.
And then we'll do, ma'am?
Do a roll call for the votes. Have each, each board member state their vote.
Um, you made the motion, so Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Second the motion? Ms. McGosh? Uh, Mr. Adams? Mr. Fetsco?
No.
Mr. Harold? So the motion fails two to three. There we go.
Thank you, and we will omit item D and we move into a public forum. We'll now begin public forum. The purpose of public forums is allow members of the public to address the School Board on any matter regarding education and administration of our schools. In this setting, we as board members are not compelled to answer questions or respond to you, and typically, we're not engaged in back and forth dialogue in this venue. However, the board and the superintendent will note your contact information for a response if appropriate. As always, we invite you to contact any of us by phone or by email for follow-up. Our meeting times and locations are posted on the Escambia County School District website. Speakers must adhere to the guidelines outlined in the policy and posted on the agenda. You are expected to be respectful when you address to the board. You also asked to use titles and not individual names. Personal attacks against School Board members, superintendent, staff, employees will not be tolerated. Please direct your comments to the chair. Personal attacks against other speakers and outbursts during another speaker's time will also not be tolerated. If you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned by the chair and subject to removal if violations continue. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Ms. Owens will serve as a parliamentarian. Ms. Buzzwell is the timekeeper and will start the timer with your opening remarks. The buzzer will sound when your time has elapsed. When the timer sounds, please bring your comments to a close. The first speaker we have is Ashley Gallagher. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me? Last week, Judge Mendoza ruled that book banning or book removal in public schools under HB one zero six nine is unconstitutional. Fascists want to control what books our children have access to. Don't enable them. Ray Bradbury wrote a book about book burning in a dystopian America called Fahrenheit four fifty-one. He said, "You don't have to burn books to destroy a culture, just get people to stop reading them." If this effort were truly about protecting children from sexual content, you should remove the Bible, not Little Rock Nine, a book about the end of racial segregation in schools in Arkansas. But that's not what this is really about. This is about robbing our youth of resources and materials that teach critical thinking and empathy. It's an attack on education. This is still a democracy. No banning or removal of books. No demonizing our teachers and librarians. You wonder why there is a shortage of teachers when they get paid scraps while being scrutinized by Nazis who don't even have children in school or don't even live in Escambia County. Last month's book removals, three hundred and eleven came from complaints from Clay County, not Escambia County. We don't need a war on woke. We need adequate support for our teachers. Our children are not endangered by a book about two penguin dads. The second leading cause of death for children in the U.S. is firearms, not books.
Thank you. We have Mackenzie Ramsey. You have three minutes. Mackenzie Ramsey.
I am here today to ask about the School Board's decision to remove hundreds of books from our school libraries in light of the recent ruling by a federal judge that HB one zero six nine is unconstitutional. I am a former Escambia County educator and an avid reader. I read many books on this list, and I find the reason for banning them absolutely ludicrous, and the blanket removal of books dangerous. When I was a teenager, I read many books that alluded to sexual concepts or even had overtly sexual scenes, and this did not make me a deviant sexual predator. In fact, it was some of the only access I got to sex education. It was where I learned about what consent is, what the signs of toxic and abusive relationships are, and how to practice safe sex. These books didn't push me into having sex. They gave me guides on how to create boundaries around it, how to say no, and how to put confusing feelings into words. Having access to books is a lifeline to many students in our county, whether that be to help them understand and navigate this puberty and hormone-fueled phase of their lives, or to help them understand their blossoming and multifaceted identities. Furthermore, after reviewing the submissions for the books that were removed from the libraries, I noticed that one person's name showed up over and over again, which I will not mention because she is an employee of this county. She uses phrases like sexual deviance and indoctrination when referencing books with queer themes, and she says that books that describe the black experience are race-baiting and anti-white. Knowing this, I'm having a hard time understanding why we are allowing a single person who is so clearly fueled by homophobia, racism, and xenophobia the power to remove so many books from our libraries when this board put together a committee of thoughtful individuals who wanted to read these books thoroughly and make an informed decision, and then decided not to take the recommendations. Why is her voice so much more powerful than theirs? Additionally, from a purely economic standpoint, it makes no sense for us to continue spending money on this endeavor. Continuing with this policy in light of the recent ruling will lead to costly lawsuits. And as a former educator in this county, I'm well aware that there is no money for this. It is a slap in the face to everyone in this county who worked so hard for the laughable paychecks to take money that could buy school supplies, pay for staff, or upgrade AC units and spend it on banning books. All of this is to say that I strongly encourage the School Board to retract their earlier decision to blanket ban these books, as it will come at a great cost, both financially and emotionally, to the citizens of Escambia County, especially our students.
Next we have Mr. Rafael Lopez. You have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here. My name is Rafael Lopez, and this is my son right here with me. Uh, members of the board, I stand here tonight not just as a parent, but as a father with my son, and because this is who it's all about. This is who it's all about, kids. Um, Florida's, uh, Florida's constitution is clear. The people have the right to know, okay? Chapter one nineteen is clear. Access must be prompt, costs must be reasonable, and excuses are not compliance. When the Department of Education can find two hundred and eleven emails, but Escambia claims thirteen thousand for the same vendors, something is wrong. It's very wrong. And when I ask to search for search terms, itemized costs, and rolling production, I'm not asking for favors, I'm demanding the law to be followed. I've narrowed my request in good faith, and I've cooperated. What I haven't received is transparency. So this is bigger than me. This is about whether the district represents the rights of parents, the rights of children, and the rights of the public. So my son deserves better. Every child in Amer- in Escambia deserves better, and this district won't honor the constitution. So I say that just as I had an open letter to the board that I'm not going to read here, but it is public record. So I'm, everyone of here should have it. I believe you had it. We had an email exchange just a few minutes ago. But it's, I'm sorry, it's in your email, just a few minutes ago. But anyways, I just wanted to have it all be public record. Uh, this is about privacy and transparency. So I, there's an open letter out. Uh, feel free, if you'd like to take a look at it, it is public record, and everyone here has a copy of it. So I would love to have an answer, because I'm very mad about what's happening, what we're allowing, what you guys are allowing. I'm here to protect this kid and all the kids I can't see, and I'll go ahead and stand up for it. I will, can't be quiet, so I do need an answer. And I'm going to do my best to raise and protect him. That's my responsibility. So I'd love to have an answer to my open letter and what I mentioned today. Thank you.
Next we have Calista, Calista Brown. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Calista. I am a resident of Escambia County and am an alumni of the Escambia County School District. I have a younger sister attending fifth grade in the county, as well as my dad that started his new job as a teacher at Escambia High School. I'm here today to urge this board to please issue necessary guidance to school employees that ICE cannot enter schools and question students without a warrant. Guidance provided by this board is absolutely necessary because after speaking with my community, including workers, students, and even teachers, I've learned that there is a very large disconnect between, uh, what the law states, what the people actually know about the laws, how their rights could be affected, and how they are being affected. So what the laws do state according to the Fourth Amendment is that ICE cannot enter a public school, search, question, or seize students and staff without a judicial warrant and only a judicial warrant. Probable cause doesn't usually apply in this case without very specific documentation about the individual that ICE rarely provides unless they're looking for someone specific, typically an adult. Regardless of what your personal opinion is on immigration, legally, students have a right to attend public school regardless of race, national origin, and yes, even immigration status. Schools legally cannot ask about a child's immigration status during enrollment, even if an ICE agent asks for it. Still, most people are not aware of these laws, and with both parents working forty-plus hour work weeks, taking care of their school-aged children, and still maintaining their health and wellness on top of that, students, teachers, and working people should not be blamed for not knowing the law without being told them directly. Again, this is why I'm urging the Escambia County School District to provide guidance to school employees in regards to potential ICE raids in order to make the law accessible to the people in the school district. Specifically, this should include, uh, ideally, a written response policy and preparedness plans in advance, um, designating at least one authorized person per school to review warrants and subpoenas, document all interactions with immigration enforcement, and of course, train non-authorized staff and volunteers on how to respond to ICE requests. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next we have, we have Kristen Palmer. You have three minutes. Oh, Kirsten.
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 Close.
Close.
I'm Kirsten Palmer. Some of you, um, might know me. I've had two kids, uh, in one or more Escambia County schools since twenty eighteen. I'm also a PTA volunteer and have been involved in everything from advisory council to cutting a million little pumpkins up for Halloween to sell for twenty-five cents a piece. Um, what I've enjoyed the most in all this time is the Reflections Art Program. I've led it at my son's elementary school for four years, at my daughter's high school for four years, and for the Escambia County Council PTA for three years. It's in the name. It's a reflection of our student body, their identities, their pride, and their struggles. Um, some of you have been to our awards ceremony and hopefully took the time to appreciate the creativity and minds of our diverse student body. We've used themes like "I matter," this year's is "I belong," but I fear that they're hearing the wrong message from you, who seek to ban literature that reflects their lived experience. I've also served on, I think, six book committees since they began. I've learned a lot. I've read a lot. Um, the first year saw the resignation of Michelle White, our media specialist, um, and then our beloved principal mid-year, along with several teachers. I thought the COVID years were really hard on them, but this was way worse. The burnout was obvious and severe and continues, myself included. The last book I had to read was six hundred pages of a fairy fantasy novel. Did I enjoy it? No. But do I have the right to tell anyone else that they wouldn't enjoy it? Also, no. The last move of just yanking every title banned by Clay County is especially concerning. I would hope that we aren't sending this message to our students, that if all your friends jump off the bridge, you can jump too. Um, the first time we as parents were given the choice of opting in or out of YA and challenged materials, less than five percent of us even answered, um, stating very clearly that this is not an issue for us. And it should have ended there. We didn't need to do everything else. It's important to note that materials in our library didn't just appear there. They've been meticulously reviewed and well est- by well-established literary organizations and selected by trained professionals who have years of education and expertise on what's appropriate for them and their age level. Lastly, we don't have book banning money. There's a sign out front that we can't get bus drivers, and instead we're spending eight hundred thousand dollars on lawyers fighting something that's continually ruled as unconstitutional. Remember, those signs that say "All in for students" means all of them. That includes queer students and students of color, and all the titles that reflect them and their lived experience. Please listen to the majority of students, parents, and teachers, the majority, who do not support this. Thank you very much.
Next we have Mr. Charlie Dial. You have three minutes.
Hello. Hi, uh, my name is Charlie Dial. I'm an Escambia County resident. I didn't go to school here, but I did next door in Walton County, so I'm kind of a local. Um, and I'm also here to ask this board to issue urgently necessary and reasonable guidance to school employees that they should not allow ICE to enter our schools without a warrant. There's a lot of confusion over what the law requires of teachers and administrators on this issue, and it's the responsibility of this body to make it clear that in Escambia County, in accordance with the law and the mission statement read at the beginning of this meeting, all students have equal access to quality education. The law does not require school employees to allow ICE into our campus, campuses without a warrant, and that needs to be clarified to our teachers, and much more importantly, to our students and their families who put their trust in Escambia County schools. I also just want to say that, kind of like Calista said, I really don't believe that this is an issue of what your views are on immigration. Uh, I, I really don't. This issue is actually much simpler than that. Do we go beyond what the law requires? Do we allow ICE to use our schools as collection sites to frighten our children, to undo the hard work that every school employee does every day to make schools a safe environment, a place of learning, a place that students and their families trust? Or do we simply follow the law and demand that if ICE wants to come into our schools, that they have to have a warrant? That's it. Either go beyond the law to serve ICE or follow the law to service Escambia County students. Give them peace of mind and reward their trust. give them peace of mind, and reward their trust. This is a credibility issue. If you're unwilling to offer this guidance, how can you really say that you're making decisions with the safety of our children in mind? How can you say your mission is to provide equal access to quality education? Our school workers need to understand their rights. They need to have the support of this body, and so they need clear and strong guidance about the legal options they have to protect their students, our students, our community. Thank you.
Next, we have Alfonso Genesal.
Hi, my name is Hira Sol Alfonso. I'm an Escambia County resident. I also work for Escambia County Public Schools, and I have for a year now. And like everybody here, I'm very concerned about our students. I'm also very concerned about our teachers. Right now, with what's going on with ICE, they really are acting lawless. They are not following the law. They're in fact breaking it every single day. They are busting down people's doors. People have probably seen those videos in DC, how they're treating human beings. They're beating them on the streets. Is that following the law? And so right now, what we're asking today, what we have, we actually have come here before, for those of you who don't know, we came here in the last school year, and now we're coming again because we really want you guys to listen to us. What's happening is serious. They are not following the law. They are coming into places without warrants, and we want to provide guidelines to teachers who really don't know what to do in case ICE does come in. They don't know the law. So we would like you guys to come out with guidelines that say the law, hey, you don't have to let ICE in without a warrant, that will say, can you provide me your badge, your name, what agency are you coming from, why are you here, simple questions like that. Many counties in Florida have come out with these guidelines. You guys can probably look at what those guidelines have been and follow suit. But these have been proven to help and to deter unlawful entry from ICE because they have come in without warrants, sometimes with false warrants that don't have the person's name on them, that isn't signed by a judge. Because in order to come into a school, you need a judicial warrant. That's one that's signed by a federal judge. And they have come with ones with administrative warrants or with no warrant at all. So we really just want these simple guidelines. And like Charlie said, this is really just following the law. We're not asking you to go beyond the law. It's actually the opposite. Follow the law. So hopefully, we can deter ICE from doing really, really terrible things in the place where our children go to school. Okay? It is very, very scary to be a child right now in Florida schools and be in fear that you yourself, or your classmate, or your friend is going to be unlawfully taken by a random stranger. So thank you.
Next, we have Leila Kurin. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Leila Holiday now. I got married. I keep forgetting about that. I'm a local resident. I grew up all through my years in the Escambia County Public School District, and now I have been and am currently a teacher. I love the school that I work for. I love the district. I'm here, as many before me have said, just to request that the county implement a system, even if it's just a standardized paper, even if it's just one of those emails that are sent out, just something that allows educators, staff, faculty to know the procedural happenings of immigration policies and enforcement in our schools, and how we can protect our students as a whole and in general, and especially our immigrant students. The school that I'm currently employed for, like I said, I love it. I love our students, and our student population is at risk, and we have to acknowledge that. At the beginning of last school year, I had far more immigrant students than at the end because of fear, because they were afraid to go to school. And I think a lot of that could be cleared up just by having something even just posted at the front of the school. Like, we have so many posters. I'm sure my school is not the only one. We have so many informational things so that people can be informed. And that could just be one that students and their parents can be informed that their school is taking care of them, wants to protect them, and wants to keep them safe. So I really hope that everyone speaking here, it builds up to a case because this isn't the first time that this has been brought up. And I know it was put on the news, and it was just very vague that we're going to follow the law. I think that people would appreciate some more clarity on that. So thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. Have a great night.
Next speaker, DeShawn McKenzie. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is DeShawn McKenzie. I'm also a teacher here in Escambia County and a member of the Escambia Education Association. I'm here to follow suit with a few other people who have spoken already with a simple request that our school board follow suit with other districts across the state in issuing specific guidelines regarding ICE. We've seen a summer of prolonged ICE raids across the country and throughout the Gulf Coast, and with recent large federal funding increases to ICE, we can expect an increase in activity here in Pensacola and the larger Escambia County as well. Last school year, as raids began, we, as teachers, began to see a rise in absenteeism and fear among our parents. I've heard from social workers that families are refusing to answer the door, that kids are refusing to come to school, in off-the-record conversations with coworkers because there's a lack of guidance, and our administrators don't have the answers they're looking for. They're saying things like, "I'll bar the door to protect my students," or, you know, making drastic gestures because they care about their students and want them to be safe, and they don't know the law either. As was referenced earlier, I know that it was vaguely put out on the news that the district will just follow the law, which I think is important, but leaving it to every individual administrator, parent, student, and teacher to know the law, you know, like inside and out, is not very thorough when the district could easily put out very clear guidelines of what the law is, in layman's terms, that would make it much easier for everyone else to follow the law. Because of the lack of clarity and, you know, people, I can speak for teachers specifically, folks are busy. Folks do not have the time to study the law and know all the ins and outs of immigration, especially if it doesn't affect them directly. So because of that, there's confusion and fear, and it's running rampant when simple policy could address those fears. Regardless of folks' political beliefs or leanings, we should all move to put children first in this district. In this instance, all that that requires is a cursory review of the law that is given out, like was mentioned before, like many of the emails we receive as far as the policies, the guidelines, what we're doing to handle certain things. I know at the beginning of this school year, we had a very thorough meeting on what the laws were around cell phone policy in school, and it was very well explained, and we were all aware, and all right, cool, this is the law now, we need to follow it. Around ICE raids and ICE approaching schools, we could easily have a faculty meeting that takes 20 to 30 minutes that very simply breaks down the law there as well, rather than leaving it vague and leaving it for teachers, students, and administrators to figure it out for themselves. Counties such as Lee County, Orange County, Brevard County, St. Lucie County, Osceola, and my hometown county of Seminole County have already done this, laying out a very simple blueprint that the district could follow. It actually would be very little work for our school board because there's already a blueprint that exists across the state as far as what the laws are. I don't think we're asking for anything more than a clearly laid-out assessment of the law as it exists, and it would allow teachers, parents, and most importantly, students to feel a sense of safety when they're interacting with their schools. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Linda Fossil. You have six minutes. Three minutes donated from Susan. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I've heard a lot about book review committees in the past month, and I'm guessing that most of you picked up the phone and called several of your friends or acquaintances and asked them to be on the book committees, to represent your views about books. I know you did because several book review members stated that so-and-so called me and asked me to participate. The committees are comprised of citizens representing each of the school board districts. Come to the committee, each with their specific viewpoint. Even with that viewpoint, whatever it is, the committees have voted a majority of the time to retain challenged books. That includes the people you all called because you felt they represented your views and the viewpoint of your district. That includes the community member who, after having been given the definition of pornographic and was told by other book review members that the book they were reviewing did not contain pornography, was quite unhappy with the group decision to retain the book, or the community member who insisted on showing videos from their phone of so-called proof that being gay made one a pedophile. That book decision was to ban the book. Committee members discuss the book through the questions they are asked to respond to and come to a decision to retain, age up, age down, or ban the book. That is how the process works. There are not left-leaning committees that voted to retain each book or right-leaning committees that voted to remove each book. There are simply community members who... ...of nonpartisan elected officials. The book committees should continue, not be discontinued, because the board does not like the decisions of the community. I had to use my teacher voice there. The motion that the, I think I still do, the motion that the board agreed to in July to remove books without review and to stop all purchases of books is very problematic. Was it the intent of this board to have teachers pack up their classroom libraries and for new teachers not to have a classroom library at all? Because that is what has happened. Teachers put in a lot of time, energy, and effort into creating reading opportunities for their students, and now they are unable to provide those because the board thinks it's a good idea to take away classroom libraries from students? I don't believe that was the intent at all. A federal judge has ruled that the state's 2023 law on banning pornographic books is too broad and violates the First Amendment and that the Miller test be used to determine if a book is harmful to minors. This ruling makes it clear that book challenges cannot merely judge a book by its cover or a maliciously selected excerpt. You have all taken an oath to uphold the Constitution. This includes protecting our students' First Amendment right to access information free of viewpoint discrimination. House Bill 1069 has been ruled largely unconstitutional. Respect the rights of our citizens and return unconstitutionally removed books to the library shelves. Every objection must be put through the Miller test to determine whether a material is harmful to minors under Florida law. This means a full and fair public review process that considers the work in its entirety. Bad policy comes at a cost. Don't put our funding at risk by continuing to violate the rights of our students. Litigation is costly and does not improve community trust in our public schools. And speaking of policy, 2520 and 2522 works to further restrict books and the rights of students to read. The Department of Education Book Removal List becomes the guide for books which cannot be selected, not qualified, certified educators. A profanity count is now the norm for choosing books at various levels. The ruling last week states that restriction cannot be enforced until a lack of literary, artistic, scientific, political value has been proven true for certain ages, grades, that are to be restricted from access. There's a good chance that this policy is unconstitutional and subject to further legal challenges. Maybe you should consider pausing this update until there is further clarification. The school district has already spent close to $800,000 in taxpayer dollars to defend itself from two First Amendment lawsuits. And are you willing to risk another expenditure on two or two on book removals and book policies? I hope not. Thank you.
Next, we have Pam Schwartz. You have three minutes. It's not on the form.
Is there a form by Ms. Beck?
There's a form that Barbara Beck, but it does say she donated. It didn't come on. You have six minutes. You have six minutes.
Thank you. The Dalai Lama said, "Be the change you want to see in the world." He was exiled from his country and culture of Tibet by the Chinese government, who is still trying to punish people because of the way they were born into a specific culture and language. I am very concerned that that is happening in our country today. And today, August 19th, I received in my mail a certificate of appreciation for being a humanitarian. I have never donated to this organization, but I am getting so many things from nonprofits today who want to promote a better world with humanitarianism, and I am so sad that my government does not seem to have that humanitarian attitude towards all people in the world, much less the people in our country. I am a woman, a wife, a mother, a grandmother, an American humanitarian. I am also an imperfect Christian disciple striving to be more like Jesus Christ that I believe is a role model of the way, the truth, and the life. And I am concerned about a government that promotes lies and misinformation without evidence and facts to defund all of our institutions that have been a part of our Constitution and have what have made our country great. It's not hatred that makes our country great, but it's the democracy that believes in government of the people, by the people, for the people. And Abraham Lincoln, after the Civil War, or during the Civil War, gave his speech that he hoped it would not perish from this earth. And I am concerned that that is what is happening right now. Loving life, liberty, learning, and the Lord, I'm an activist promoting God's love for all people. And God is the one that created the beautiful diversity in this world, and yet we have governments from the national and the state level who are saying, if you have programs that use diversity, equity, and inclusion, you're going to have your funding cut. They are defunding our public schools. They are attacking our universities. They are defunding research that has helped people around the world to be healthier and to promote international good relationships of peace and justice for all people everywhere. And I believe that God is the one that promoted us to use the golden rule and to love one another as God has loved us, to love our neighbors as ourselves. And His idea was that we would show inclusion, respecting diversity, respecting equity, and the achievement and prosperity for all people. We were told, what does the Lord require but to act justly, loving mercy, and walking humbly? And I am sad that my government has people that are not humble. They apparently do not love justice for all people because some of the things that they're dismantling makes me afraid for my Bill of Rights and the freedoms that I have enjoyed in my 77 years. And I am afraid that my prosperity, my posterity is not going to have the same prosperity with the American dream in promoting peace and justice and love worldwide because I'm afraid my government is playing God, and God will be their judge one day. The partisanship, if anyone is supporting a partisan party in power over the good and general welfare of all the people. And I am thinking of all the children that I taught that haunt my heart. One in nine children in Escambia County is suspected of child abuse. You can't protect the innocence of children. Our job is to prepare them for the realities of the world in a way that does not make them afraid, but empowers them with the confidence that they have by developing each one of their individual potentials as individuals who are unique. And when we come together, sharing our unique individual gifts and strengths that God gave each one of us, we're created in His image, but we are each unique. And if we do not learn how to cooperate and collaborate and be united in sharing the love of God, I fear for this country's future, the future of the people here on Earth when we disrespect the planet and all people that God created. So I am asking you, overcome our focus on book banning and abortions, banning abortions. You're not going to change whether we have people that are LGBTQ. You're not going to change people... You're not going to change people's religious beliefs. You keep changing the laws and confusing people, which enables those to promote their own power and profit because of the confusion that people are in with culture wars, with trade wars, and the things that are going on in this country right now. So for the love of God, I beg you, get over your partisanship and think about those children in those chairs and the future. They are our future. And when our government is defunding public education and our officials that we elect here are condoning that either by their silence or other things, we need to do better.
Next speaker is Ally McDonald. You have three minutes.
Hello. Is this, I can't tell if this works. Okay, great. Hello, my name's Ally McDonald. I graduated from Pensacola High School in 2019. Go Tigers! And I received an excellent education. I've been very proud to say that I received a high-quality education from a public school in northwest Florida. And recently, I looked at the resolution passed last month, and approximately four out of six of my senior year curriculum for my English class had been removed. And so I can tell that people today, the students today, are not getting the same excellent education that I did. And that's a little concerning. When I did some more reading, I saw that School Board Policy 2522 said that any action to remove material will be accompanied by a statement from the board for the reason for its removal. In my opinion, because someone else did is not a sufficient reason to remove material. And that was the reason that was given for removing hundreds of books from not only the library, but from all curriculum in the Escambia County School District. I understand that a lot of school boards are coming under scrutiny from the Attorney General, from the public. But I think that's part of holding a public office. And I think you have to do what's best for the kids. When I was a student at Pensacola High School, I remember there was one book. I think it's called Simon Versus the Homo Sapient Agenda, adapted into a movie called Love Simon. That's what it's called. Anyway, I remember seeing that book when I walked in the Pensacola High School library and feeling, just for a second, a little bit more normal. Not fully normal, but it was really nice to know that there were other kids somewhere, even if just in a book, that were like me. And I really worry for kids who don't have that anymore. Because I had a good high school education. I didn't think there was anything wrong with it. I don't think there was anything traumatizing about it. I don't think there's anything pornographic about letting teenagers see that there are other teenagers like them or learning about history. So I urge all of you to take into consideration the ruling that the House bill was recently deemed, and I think accurately, unconstitutional. And to think about, I don't know, the kids in those seats, as a lot of people have said before, whether or not they should be worried that a book about someone like them is going to get removed, whether one of their friends is going to be removed unconstitutionally and illegally because their teachers didn't know what to say or their administrators didn't know what to say when people exercising force through ICE came to their classroom. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks for your time.
Next speaker we have is Rachel Bismarck. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Rachel Bismarck, and I have two children in public school here in Escami County. I am deeply disappointed that the school board has unanimously voted to forego the committees that analyze whether a book is obscene as a whole and lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value as a whole, in favor of pulling books off the shelves blindly simply because someone in the community or the state complains. Some titles pulled include Anti-Racist Baby, a board book that simply encourages celebrating a diverse community much like ours; The Hate U Give, a young adult novel that takes us along as a teen girl grapples with a violent encounter with a police officer and how she navigates the aftermath within the various communities that she inhabits; Little Rock Nine, a graphic novel that retells part of the story of the civil rights movement; I Know Why the Cage Bird Sings, an autobiography that shows how strength of character and love of literature helped Maya Angelou overcome racism trauma. Am I sensing a theme here? Why are we suppressing the academic and narrative exploration of the American Black experience? Other titles include the experiences of women as a whole and discuss women's roles in society. Still, more titles discuss practical matters concerning normal human sexual development. Many of the flag books discuss the LGBTQ experience. Instead of having these books available to our teens in Escami County, we are pretending these subjects and experiences don't matter when we know they do. Not one of us will ever know exactly what it's like to be someone who is different from us unless we crack open that novel and live inside that character's head for a while. What about our parents' rights, you might ask? Well, there is a system in place for parents to have complete oversight over what their children read. However, some people in the county and state are walking all over my parental rights, and I don't like it. No one would dare to come into my house and dictate which foods I have available for my children. So why is someone who isn't a professional or a librarian able to stop my children? Why is someone who isn't a professional or a librarian able to stop my children from reading about the Black experience or women's perspectives or LGBTQ lives at school? It's not right for a tiny minority of parents to control what is available to all the students. It is worth noting that the committees that formally analyzed the value of flag books would often slate a book to only be read by a certain age group. The committee rarely pulled a book off the shelves. Librarians and teachers are educated professionals who know what they are doing, trust them. All we are asking as parents is that you reinstate the review process. Thank you very much.
Next, I have Darzella Warren. You have three minutes.
Need on this. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to address an issue that has been brought to my attention. I've received several calls, texts, emails from staff about many concerns, and a lot of them were discussed tonight by other speakers. Tonight, I'm going to address the one, the two-factor authentication. We acknowledge the district's implementation of the two-factor authentication as a necessary step securing sensitive systems. However, we must also address the growing concerns among staff regarding the use of personal devices for this mandate. Employees are currently given two options: use their personal cell phones or pay a $50 fee for a manual override tool, which carries a $300 replacement fine if lost. And if I'm mistaken on that, please let me know. This presents a clear issue of fairness and financial burden. More importantly, it raises questions about liability and privacy, especially when personal devices are used to fulfill district requirements. Staff have also reported receiving numerous texts daily, which not only consumes personal data, but also creates an ongoing intrusion into their personal devices. This level of access, combined with the potential for audits or searches in the event of a tech violation, has understandably caused discomfort. Additionally, communication about this policy has been inconsistent across work sites, leaving many unsure of expectations and alternatives. And as several of those speakers have already said, there needs to be some clarity. I need to make one thing clear. Employees should not, and I repeat, should not be told by admin that they have to do it and it is not an option when this concerns their personal device that they are paying with their money. We respectfully request clarification on the following: Will the district formally guarantee that personal devices used for authentication will not be subject to search, audit, or monitoring? What options exist for staff who do not wish to use personal devices that has no financial cost? Can the district-issued devices be configured to receive authentication codes, which I know is possible because I have seen that on a computer? Will the district provide written guidelines outlining the scope of monitoring and employee rights regarding personal device usage? We ask for a clear and equitable resolution that supports both the district's security goals and rights of its employees. Thank you.
That concludes our public forum. Are there anything else from any board members?
I would like to say something.
Yes, Ms. Burgos.
I would like to say thank you to those that came out, just speak especially about the immigration and the ICE information. I wanted to ask our attorney, I did consult with my attorney as well, but I wanted to find out ICE agents, are we having issues in Escami County with ICE agents coming into our schools?
Not truly a legal question, but this is something that I have discussed with the operations in the Safe Schools Department, and it is my understanding that there have been no ICE interactions at the schools. The closest we came was there was a construction site adjacent to Myrtle Grove Elementary.
Yes.
But as far as ICE agents showing up at our schools, to my knowledge, that has not occurred.
As you know, federal law enforcements can go in and do what they are supposed to do, what their duties are. Read a little bit about this. They have the right to do whatever duties, anywhere. DHS or Department of Homeland Security in the past have had the policy not to go to schools, not to go to churches, not to go to bathroom women's shelters, but, or other sensitive sites. But we can look at that policy and make sure we have a policy in place to do that. But ICE still does not go to schools unless there's a compelling reason. So that's what I'm hearing. So, you know, we'll have to discuss this further. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Adams.
I'm sure, Keith, you have told the employees if a law, act of law enforcement of any type comes in, they better not barricade a door or do something like that, right? I mean, because...
Yeah, but what we've communicated, not once, not twice, but often, is law enforcement is law enforcement.
That's right. Yeah, they're risking getting a felony and going to jail.
And before we close, I'd just like to make the announcement of a civil rights icon that passed away on last evening, Reverend H.K. Matthews, a person I respected highly. That was a contemporary of my father and a great civil rights leader, not only in Escami County, but nationwide. So I just wanted to mention that. Anything else from the... Yes, sir, Mr. Harrow.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I was visiting Pine Meadow Elementary today, and I was pleasantly surprised. We had requested that assistance from the county in getting a crosswalk there. It's a very serious situation there where they're building a bunch of townhomes and things. And I drove up there today and doggone if it wasn't there. So I stopped and talked to the principal, not the principal, assistant principal at Pine Meadow, took pictures of it, sent it to the superintendent and operations because this is an example of good cooperation there, them helping us in a critical need. So I just want, and I want to thank Commissioner Berry